Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
Present.
Mayor Radifrada?
Here.
Alder Gerhart?
Here.
Alder Herbst?
Here.
Alder Jester?
Here.
Alder Maldonado?
Here.
Alder Strassmann?
Here.
Alder Udella?
Here.
Alder Wheeler?
Here.
You have a call, Mayor.
Thank you. So next for the public appearances for no agenda items, I asked Chief Joe Porenmark to share with us some of the update about the heat, you know, so what is coming in the next couple of days and how we can inform the community, how to prepare. So Chief, can you give us an update?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll make this brief because we have posted information on our Facebook page. We're working with the city to make sure that information is as current as possible through the city's website and through our social media feeds. What you need to be aware of is today, obviously, we had a heat advisory because our heat index was over 100 and we're looking at an excessive heat warning tomorrow based on the fact that the heat index is going to be over 105. And right now, the current estimate is about 110 degrees. The reason why we're bringing this to your attention is because of the fact that we have some people in our community that are somewhat vulnerable and maybe need additional assistance, asking you to keep an eye out for those that maybe live by themselves, reach out to family and friends, and then give us a call if you think that there is something that resembles an emergency that needs immediate assistance. We do know that working in direct sunlight in these conditions, within about 15 minutes, you can start having heat-related symptoms and your body will not necessarily have the ability to cool immediately. Heat stress is cumulative, so if you don't give your body enough time to cool off, it'll just get hotter to the point where you start having some medical issues. So today, we know that our heat index was right around 96 degrees. Tomorrow, supposed to be right around 112 degrees. And Thursday, we're projecting about the same, maybe a little bit less. We're not necessarily worried about air quality going into the rest of the week. And right now, we have no impacts on service delivery. However, we are working with Dane County Emergency Management to make sure that if there's anything that's happening throughout the county, if there's something that may impact us from a service delivery standpoint, some of the things that we're watching very closely is the electrical grid and making sure that everything is appropriately maintained that way. If you know somebody that requires electricity based on some of the equipment that they have in their home for medical purposes and they are without electricity, you need to call right away so that we can make arrangements for them and get them the assistance they need. Lastly, what I want to ask, actually, two things lastly. 211 is operational. They will provide additional assistance as far as cooling centers in the area. The cooling areas that we have set up in Fitchburg are the senior center, the community center, the library. We obviously have the splash pad that is outside and you have to be concerned about direct sunlight there. However, that is open tomorrow. And then there's a couple of other areas that we have linked on our social media feed so that if you need additional assistance because of the fact that there is no air conditioning or power, we have a place to at least put you temporarily to make sure that you're taken care of and you don't have any heat-related issues. So that's a lot of information in a short amount of time. I'll answer any questions if you have any. If not, feel free to reach out to the fire department and we'll help direct you in the direction that you need to go.
Any question for the chief? No? Okay, thank you, Chief. So next, we move to the consent agendas. So I need a motion.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of the consent agendas, say aye.
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 And opposed, the motion carries. So next, we move to the administrator report. So, okay, Misty?
So the first one I will repeat because it's so important. The library, senior center, city hall, and splash pad are city facilities available during regular hours as cooling areas during the excessive heat this week. The list of cooling centers in the area is available on the Public Health Madison Dane County website. As a result of the excessive heat this week, the community movie night event in Southdale Park has been rescheduled. That's going to be Wednesday, August 30th instead at 7:45. The police department is hosting a community meeting at the City on a Hill Church located at 2924 Fish Hetchery Road on Thursday, August 24th at 5:30. Road construction, the intersection of Lacy and Seminole is planned to reopen on September 1st. Construction of Lacy Road to the west of Seminole Highway will continue. The intersection of Lacy and Sine is planned to open to traffic on September 1st. A four-way stop will be in place until the traffic signal installation is complete. And the intersection of Sine and East Sherrill is planned to close for reconstruction on September 5th. And last but not least, the senior center patio ribbon cutting ceremony is planned for September 11th at 11:30 a.m. That is it.
Okay, thank you. Any question for Misty? No? Okay, thank you, Misty. So next, we move to the item number seven is commission and committees report. We are going to start with plan commission. Gabriela.
I move approval of resolution R.11623, authorizing execution of a contract for planning services with MSA Professional Services for the creation of a South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plan and the Greenfield Neighborhood Plan.
So did plan commission approve?
Yes.
Did finance committee approve?
Yes, finance approved.
Okay, so who is going to, Gabriela, can you start with that?
Yeah.
We have Diana also on the screen, so.
Yeah, so this is the contract for MSA. They were selected, they put out RFPs for both, each of the neighborhood plans separately. And people, some of the companies submitted proposals for both. And we ended up selecting MSA for both the Greenfield and the South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plans, slightly under budget. And we're going to move forward with those. Diana, do you have anything to add?
No, the total budget came in for $278,000 and our time schedule will place us to hopefully wrap up in October of 2024. So I'm here for any questions.
Any questions? Oh, Jay.
Yeah, I just had one and we had received an email from a resident regarding the composition of the committee. And when I looked over it, having two representatives from each of the two developers seems a little excessive.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, I can speak. Go ahead.
No, no, you're fine, yes.
Okay, so I can speak to that. This was the negotiation that we went into with the two developers in order to come to our agreement on the cost share. We believe it's reasonable. The city still maintains a majority of the steering committee. So staff believes that it's a reasonable request.
And also, I think there is a precedent that when we work with the North Stoner Prairie, there was also some cost sharing with some of the stakeholders. So we have done this in the past.
Well, I don't have a problem having a developer representative on the steering committee. My problem is having two from each developer on the steering committee. I mean, if we had one from each developer, that would be fine.
I think my understanding is that they are going to alternate because they cannot attend both together to the meeting. So this is why they are two.
Well, then they can just send a different person each week. But when it comes to votes on the committee, that's four votes for the developers.
But the city maintain majority.
Diana, can you share what the, I don't know if you can share your screen just to show what the makeup is for each of the committees, just for reference?
Let me go grab that a minute. I apologize, I didn't have that right up.
I can just read it off to you while you're looking at it. But for the South Stoner Prairie, it's two Payne and Dolan reps, two Yahara Materials reps, one Cory Vista Neighborhood Representative, one person from the council plan commission, one person from the North Stoner Prairie Neighborhood and Crescent Crossing, one from the Verona School District, and one from Karpsey. So five representatives and then four developers, four from the developers.
David.
Diana, Mr. Hayes' email, you know, he's very thorough, contends that they're buying something for the $64,000. Was that, is that a cost sharing that was negotiated? Can you explain that?
Can we discuss that in the, it's the next resolution?
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Yeah, we can discuss that in the next one.
Okay, sorry.
Any other question about this? No?
Well, I'm not comfortable with this. I can't think of any other neighborhood plan that we've done where we've given developers that kind of influence. I mean, I was looking at the McGaw Park Steering Committee not too long ago. We had one developer representative that was on, it was a 10-member steering committee. There was one developer representative and there was one business representative from the nearby business park. I just don't understand why we're giving four votes to the developers.
So maybe because they are the two, you know, owners of the land and that.
Well, and we had one owner of the land who had one representative on the steering committee for McGaw Park. It just seems excessive to me. I mean, the other five representatives are coming from very diverse backgrounds. They aren't necessarily city representatives, especially the representative from Karpsey. I mean, you know, the, I just don't, I don't think this is a good way for this. I certainly don't think it's a good precedent to set by giving each developer two representatives on a nine-member steering committee. But I just, I don't think this, I don't think this is right. I think this is a wrong way to go about it.
And you, David?
Jay, I tend to agree with you, but, you know, I could see them having two people because, you know, one might be the legal and one might be their environmental. But I still, they want to have two people attending, but I agree with Jay that they should only have one vote.
Can I, question, so the one we're on right now is for the MSA contract?
Yeah.
Does the contract include, like specifications about the makeup of the committee? Or is that next with the cost sharing agreement? Because there's a second item that's specifically about the cost sharing. I just don't know functionally if this, like, can we accept the contract now and then continue the discussion about the?
With the composition of the, yes, I will do that.
Well, the resolution R.11623 references resolution R.11723. So maybe we should consider 11723 first. Unless that also references, back references 116.
No, they are two different resolutions. I don't think that they are independent. So the question is, my question is, Diana, is we are approving also in this resolution, the composition of the groups?
In this resolution, you are not approving the composition of the steering committee that is just a proposal for this particular resolution, which is approving the contract. And then in the next resolution, you're approving the cost sharing agreement.
Okay, so. Okay, so we are now approving the composition of the steering committee here, so. Okay, so any other question regarding the contract? No? Okay. All those in favor of approving resolution R.11623, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. Okay. So next one, Gabriela.
I'll move approval of R.11723, authorizing execution of an agreement for cost sharing for the creation of a South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plan between the city of Fitchburg, Fitchburg Minerals LLC, Payne and Dolan, and Fitchburg Hills LLC, Yahara Materials.
Second.
Okay, so Gabriela, can you tell us what it is this?
Yeah, so this lays out exactly how the costs are split. The Greenfield Neighborhood Plan is not part of this. That is not a caution agreement. This is just for the South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plan. And it's going to be split 50% the city, 25% Payne and Dolan, 25% Yahara Materials.
Okay, Diana, do you want to add anything else to this resolution?
I would just mention that staff believes that this approach with the cost share is a benefit to the city in that we can work collaboratively with the landowners. And I will just say, they have a significant interest in the positive outcome of this study and a positive outcome for both the city and us, both the city and themselves, I'm sorry, so.
Any question?
That's all.
David, do you have a question?
So back, you know, Mr. Hayes' email, he seems to infer that that they're buying something with their $64,000. That's part of the cost sharing that you have negotiated. Am I correct?
Yes, it is, Alder. This is, was a negotiation with the two major landowners. And I do not see this as them, as the landowners buying anything. I see this as a collaborative effort to benefit the city.
Thank you. I'm sold.
Any other question? Jay?
Well, this is the resolution where we're approving this steering committee. And I, yes, it is. It's in the agreement that we're approving right now. It's in Article 2, Section A, to be more precise. And I'm not comfortable with this division, having four representatives of the developer and these other representatives, as they may be. I just don't think that's right.
Okay, what should be the ideal?
I think giving each of them one representative is fine. So I will make an amendment to that effect. I would like to amend Article 2 to have one representative from each developer.
I'll second that.
Oh, okay, the other thing that I, can I make another comment? That Misty mentioned is this is a contract and we need to, you know, we need to talk to the other part too.
That's fine.
Okay, so can we table this instead?
Yeah, if you'd prefer, yeah.
Is it time sensitive now, isn't it?
Of course, we're time sensitive, but staff can work quickly to return to negotiate on this particular contract.
All right, I would move to table this until our next meeting or a month from now?
I would just be interested in hearing what the rest of the council, if they have opinions about it, just before we move on.
Okay.
Because I personally don't have an issue with this. I trust staff's assessment of it.
Okay.
So the five, you know, the majority of, like, in the city's interest seems adequate to me. You know, obviously, I'm willing to have discussion about it. But I just wanted to put that out there that since that opinion hasn't been represented, I just wanted to say that at this point, I feel comfortable with staff's recommendation and with the contract. And if anyone else has any thoughts, I'd be interested in hearing them before we table it.
Joe? I cannot hear you, Joe. What do you say?
Oh, sorry. I lean towards Jay's perspective on not having an overrepresentation of developers on the committee.
Okay, so, okay, who else? I want to know if we need to table or we can?
Well, you asked for it to be tabled, so I'll make a motion to table it. The only question is, do we table it until our next meeting or the meeting after that?
I will say to the next meeting.
All right, so I will move to table this for two weeks, or till our next meeting.
Second.
Okay.
Jay?
Yeah.
Can I just ask, can I ask for clarification? It's postponing, correct, to the next meeting?
Yeah, postponing to the September 12th meeting.
Thank you.
We are going to direct the staff to work with, you know, the developers to redraft the contract. Okay, so all those in favor of table on this resolution, say aye.
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 And opposed, the motion carries. Okay. So next, Gabriela.
I'll move approval of resolution R.11823, adopting an expansion of the South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood, future urban development area, FUDA.
Second.
Okay, so did plan commission approve?
Yes.
Did Ag and Rural Affairs Committee approve?
Yes, Ag and Rural Affairs approved.
Okay, so what is this, Gabriela?
So the FUDA is the future urban development area. And the current line kind of cuts off a couple of properties in the middle. And so this proposal just moves that line to kind of be inclusive of those entire properties. Now, there was an important consideration that the staff looked at, where we want to make sure that the entire South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood can be fed by gravity wells, so we're not going to have to build a lift station or extra infrastructure. That was an important part of creating that line. And they did an analysis and determined that that extra area could still be served by gravity wells. So with that in mind, they recommended the expansion of the FUDA.
Any questions, comment? No? All those in favor of resolution R.11823, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. Okay, so next one.
I move approval of resolution R.16423, approving certified survey map request CS 251523 by Dan Day, agent for Fahy Glen LLC, to approve a certified survey map to create two buildable lots from one existing lot on property associated with 5380 West Fahy Glen.
Second.
I have David Fahy. He is here in support of the above matter and he can answer any question if needed. Okay, can you explain this?
Yeah, my understanding of this item is that they needed to do this so that they could begin construction on buildable Lot 4 in Highfield Reserve. And it was kind of an administrative thing that needed to happen in order to make that construction start. But please let me know if I didn't represent that properly.
David, you wish to speak? Okay.
Fahy Glen, which is the north road, is not coming in until 2025. And so we want to build on the southern half of the lot for Building 4, which is the 46 unit.
Any question, Jay?
Yeah, these are a couple of really weird-shaped lots.
It's going Fahy Glen curves.
Yeah.
And then there'll be a private road down the middle. So we're following the private road. And then the north side will be the four 6-unit buildings. So that will follow off that curved road. So the lot follows the layout of the buildings. And same ownership will own both lots. And we are working on all the legal fund stuff.
So there will be access to the lot, isn't it?
Yeah, there will be a shared access agreement.
So the lot that you want to build on first is the one that's along Fahy Glen or the one that's along?
The one on Tullamore.
The one along Tullamore, okay.
Yes.
Any other question, comment? No? Thank you, David. All those in favor of resolution R.16423, say aye.
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 And opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, David, and thank you. So next one.
And these next two are related. I move approval of resolution R.16523, approving certified survey map request CS 251623 by Gerald Mantz to approve a certified survey map in order to subdivide one buildable residential lot and consolidate a farm from two existing agricultural tracts on property associated with 2539 County Highway MM.
Second.
I have a resident, Mark Jones, that he's here to answer some questions and in support of the above matter for A5 and A6. So Gabriela.
So my understanding of this is that they're going to create a single-family residential parcel from a current existing farm, the Mantz Farm. And so they need to do this certified survey map and then also the rezone is the next item in order to make that happen.
So I, did plan commission approve this?
Yes.
Did Ag and Rural Affairs Committees approve?
Ag and Rural did approve, yes.
But there is an amendment to the condition 11?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I guess. Yeah, I guess I should have clarified. My original motion was to move as amended by plan commission. Because there was an existing criteria added. So whoever seconded that, if they can?
Who seconded that?
Clarify that that's okay with them.
It's lovely.
Okay, awesome.
Okay, so any question, comment?
I don't have a, I don't have a problem with this. I'm going to vote for it. But I was noting that in the council packet, we didn't have a copy of the CSM. It wasn't included for some reason. So we should include those in future things. Stuff gets overlooked, so I understand.
Thank you for the recommendation and for the oversight. Okay, any other comment? All those in favor of resolution R.16523, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. So next, we move to number six, Gabriela.
I move approval of ordinance 2023-016, request by Gerald Mantz to rezone property from AX Exclusive Agricultural to RL Low Density Residential in order to develop a new single-family residence and consolidate parcels for the existing farm associated with 2539 County Highway MM.
Second.
And this is, oh, sorry.
Did plan commission approve?
Yes.
Did Ag and Rural Affairs Committees approve?
Yes, Ag and Rural Affairs Committee approved.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Okay, what is this, Gabriela?
This is the rezone request associated with that former item. They have to change the density in order to build the home.
Any question, comment? Bill?
Yeah, so this is, this lot is just barely out of the East Highway 14 FUDA. Are we confident that that line is not going to move northward? And I'd hate to have somebody build a house only to find out that they're going to be possibly displaced in the future.
Diana, any comment?
So there are certainly no plans at this particular time to expand the East 14 FUDA. And I do know that the family, the landowners are well aware that they are in, partially in a FUDA. Certainly, the FUDAs can change once we go through a comp plan process, but there are no plans for it right now.
Any other comment, Jay?
Yeah, this is, I'm sure, being done. I didn't read all the detail to it, but I'm sure this is being done under a longstanding policy that involves rural landowners who are allowed to build one residential unit per 35 acres. So that's, that was, I'm sure, the genesis of this. We get, you know, maybe a request for this every year, maybe two. But there's only so many of them that are left. I think, Mark would know the exact answer, but I think there's only like 50 or so splits that are left in the rural area. So this is just one of the routine things that we do as a way of trying to accommodate the Ag users.
Okay, any other comment, question? All those in favor of the ordinance 2023-016, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. So next, we move to Board of Public Works.
I'll move approval of resolution R.15423, approving the relocation order and TPP related to reconstruction of Sine Road, Phase 2, north of East Sherrill Parkway to West Clayton Road.
Second.
Did the Board of Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
TTC?
TTC approved.
Plan? Finance?
Finance approved.
Okay, so what is this, David?
Well, with this reconstruction, there's two very small parcels of land that we will have to acquire. And if things go down that road, you know, we might have to exercise eminent domain. So this kind of sets in motion if that has to happen. The two lots, though, one is 25 square feet, they're not lots, but small sections. One is 25 square feet. One is 25 square feet, and that's not on Sine. And the other, I believe, is 56 square feet. So relatively small parcels. And we're hopeful that we come to an agreement with the landowners to avoid having to go that route. But this sets in motion if we need to do that.
Any comments, questions? No? All those in favor of resolution R dash 154 dash 23, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So next one.
Move approval of resolution R 15523, purchase of pedestrian lights for third addition to Terre Vessa.
Second.
Did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance Committee approved.
Okay, thank you. What is this?
So these are being, the city is purchasing these to be the same lights as the other sections of Terre Vessa. And we are buying these, not from the manufacturer, but through a distributor. And the developer will be reimbursing us for these. Now, a question did come up at Public Works. Alder Jesser brought up that he didn't feel, or we didn't believe these were, you know, dark sky compliant because there wasn't a shielding on the top. So Bill, I don't know if you wanted to say anymore about that or if you had looked into it anymore.
Yeah, I jumped on Google Maps and I looked at the street view. And so what I had initially done was go to the manufacturer's website. And I looked at the fixture. And it didn't have any sort of shielding on the top whatsoever. But when I looked at Google Street Maps View in Terre Vessa, I can see that the ones that we have out there do have a shield on the top. They are not anything close to full cutoff, but they may well be dark sky compliant.
Thank you for looking into that further. That's all I had on this.
Okay, any question for David? No? Okay, so all those in favor of resolution R dash 155 dash 23, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So next is Park Commission. David?
No report. We haven't, since we had a meeting previous to our last council. So nothing new. We'll meet on September 7th again.
Okay, thank you. Library Board?
Nothing to report.
Commission of Agent Well?
I was not able to attend the meeting, but I played the home game and watched it later. And there was some discussion about the new case management system and 2024 budget requests. And the needs that the senior center still has for transportation.
Also, on September 11 is the opening for the...
Correct.
The ribbon cut from the patio. Yeah. Okay, so everyone is invited. 11:30. Yes. Okay, next, we move to Resource Conservation Commission. Gabriela?
I'm going to start with a couple of updates and then I'll move on to the resolutions. There's currently two ordinances being worked on in RCC. There's some drafts that are going back and forth between staff and a discussion. One of them is a dark sky ordinance. And one of them is a salt reduction ordinance for the winter time. Just wanted to put that on your radar. There's nothing that's imminent, at least at this point. But those are in discussion. Two event dates that have been set. There's a Bring Your Own Bag event at the Pick and Save on September 9th from 10:00 a.m. to noon. And there is our Fall Recycling Day, which is electronics and confidential paper shredding. That is on Saturday, September 16th from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. So those dates, two things in September. And then I will move on to the resolutions. So I move approval of resolution R 15323, authorizing acceptance of Greenway Cross and Egeman Road intersection stormwater improvements bid.
Second.
Did RCC approve?
Yes.
Did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance Committee approved.
Okay, what is this, Gabriela?
Hold on just a second. I'm going to pull up the actual resolution.
While you're doing that, Gabriela, this intersection has had a history of flooding. And on July, I think, 31st, we had two and a half inches of rain and it filled up and it was impassable at that time. And the storm sewer does not extend to this intersection. So the plan is extend storm sewer and put grates on the road to draw the water away from that to correct this problem.
And this one has a budget amendment, so we need to two-thirds of votes, okay?
Yeah.
That was exactly what I was looking up to read. So thank you, David, for doing that so perfectly.
So any additional comments, question?
I thought I'd just direct it to Misty if she can talk about the budget amendment associated with this.
Sure. So the stormwater utility budgets for a certain amount in the CIP for drainage and flooding projects. We don't really know what project, but some project. This project is a little bit more than what that annual amount was. So there's a budget amendment proposed to take funding available in another CIP project in stormwater and move it to this CIP project. The reason why we need a two-thirds vote, though, is 35% of the cost is going to be covered by TID 10, which is the Fish Etter Road TID, based on the area that drains into this area. It is within the project plan. There is capacity within the project plan, but it's not included in the budget. So we have to add that piece, and that's what requires the two-thirds.
Any comments, question for Misty? No? Okay, so all in favor of...
Roll call, please.
Roll call, okay. Roll call, Tracy.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt?
Aye.
Alder Hert?
Aye.
Alder Jesser?
Aye.
Alfred Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alfred Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, so before we move to the next ordinance, I need to, I want to explain the process of how we are going to work with the next ordinance because this is an unusual situation where this ordinance went to, one, two, three, four committees. And in three committees, they have each committee amended. So added different, or language, or words, or remove paragraph. So what we're going to do is, the ordinance you have in front of you is they have the original language proposed by staff. Okay, so we are going to move that ordinance. And then staff will provide an overview of the proposed ordinance language and its purpose. And I think you received an email from Chad Brecklin explaining this, you know, the three amendments in each committee. And then we are going to provide an opportunity for the representative of Groundswell or the Paisley Parcel and any other members that want, or resident want to speak, the opportunity to speak or be available for question. Then each of you that represent a committee or commission, I will ask you to share the amendment in your committee that you passed and what is relevant for, you know, what is the relevance of this amendment? Why do you do that? And then we are going to discuss the staff proposed ordinance language. And then I open the folder so we can discuss which amendment you feel more comfortable to approve tonight. And then, or the amendment that you want to support. And then we are going to choose if we're going with the one in Plan. What is the other one? Public Works or Ag? Or if there is a combination of any other, you know? You want to add or remove, I don't know. But this is going to be the process. Are you okay with that? So we have a clean process? Okay? Okay, so Gabriela, you can move forward there.
I move approval of ordinance 2023-014 and ordinance amending Chapter 30 to allow for construction of private wells on agricultural lands adjacent to municipal water main and amending the terms in Chapter 40 for compulsory water connection waivers.
Second.
Did RCC approve?
Yes.
With the original language?
The original language.
Okay. Did Public Works approve?
I believe we did.
Yeah, you approve it and make one change.
I'm trying to find what the change was, but...
It's...
May for a shop, yeah.
All right.
Did Plan Commission approve?
Yes, as amended, which is laid out in the referral sheet.
Okay, thank you. And did Ag and Rural Affairs Committee approve?
Ag and Rural approved as amended, as shown in the referral.
Okay. Thank you. So next is, Diana, can you explain this?
Yeah, I will certainly try. So this resolution proposes to amend two sections of our Code of Ordinances. The first one is in Chapter 30, which is related to the ability to install a new private well. And the second portion of the Code of Ordinances that would change is Chapter 40, which is related to connection to the city's municipal water system. So the current Chapter 30 dash 67, that allows a new private well on private property when municipal water main exists within 200 feet of the property with under five conditions. And they're very, very limited conditions, as this is the current ordinance. And once again, this only pertains to situations where there's a request for a new well and there is a water main within 200 feet. So what is proposed is to change those requirements to allow a new well. And then it would be allowed for, per the staff's proposal, when used only for irrigation and also for the handling of agricultural crops. And sorry, I'm tipping around here, and watering of livestock, so that's number one. And then 10 acres or more zoned agriculture. So this arises out of a request from Groundswell on the Paisley Parcel to install a new well. And their site and the location for that new well would be within 200 feet of city services. So they have requested a change to our Code of Ordinances that would allow them to install this new well. So what that means then is, with the approval, with the change in Chapter 30, then there would need to be a change reflected similarly in Chapter 40. So that's kind of a overall where this is all coming from. And I'll try to take any questions as we go along.
Okay, thank you. So next, we have a couple of people that wish to speak. So I want to call Angela West. She's representing the Groundswell Organization. She wishes to speak in support. And then we have Michael Foyle. He also wishes to speak in support.
Thank you. I really appreciate all the work and great thinking that has been done by the city and the committees on this. I'll just give you a little bit of background and really kind of the why we're here.
Oh, one question, we had three minutes, okay?
Okay, great. Just so you know, Groundswell Conservancy is a land trust that has been around since 1983 for 40 years. And our mission is protecting special places forever. Recently, just prior to my taking over the position of Executive Director last March, my predecessor started an equitable access to land program, which is one of the hallmarks of our organization. That's working with BIPOC and New American Farmers to gain access to farmland so that they can grow crops for subsistence or market purposes. Back in 2019, we purchased a parcel, 4879 Goodland Park Road. And we did that in order to support a program run by Neighborhood Food Solutions, which is run by a black farmer, a Vietnam vet, who directs a not-for-profit that supports youth and formerly incarcerated individuals in learning how to grow crops and also in business and marketing skills. The problem that I addressed immediately when I started was the fact that this farmer, a black farmer who's been farming since 1984 and has used organic practices and is, you know, really revered in the community, was calling me to say, I don't have access to water. I don't have a permanent solution that works for me. The land is zoned exclusively agriculture. Farmers, pretty much all farmers I know of and we know of use wells to basically irrigate their crops. And this man, Robert Pierce, if you can imagine, is using a watering can method and a hose to water his crops. And it's been going on for four years. And it's at the point where we really feel like, we believe that it's important to come up with a permanent solution. When we looked into, you know, a permanent hookup to municipal water, we were getting quotes of $70,000 to $100,000. We're two not-for-profits, Neighborhood Food Solutions and Groundswell. And that's just really cost prohibitive for us, not to mention the cost of water as Mr. Pierce continues to cultivate more of the land, which is part of the plan. We know that there are other situations in other communities. Troy Farm, a much smaller farm in Madison, had the same issue with using municipal water in the city of Madison. Made an exception for them so that they could drill a well. And now they're using well water. We're here right now because we feel like this equitable access to land program needs to have an opportunity to thrive. Robert Pierce, a farmer who's been working for over 40 years and for four years on this parcel, needs to be able to have the ability to...
Angela, you have three minutes left.
Three minutes left. Okay, thank you.
Michael can follow.
Okay, Mike, go for it.
Angela did very well. And I'll just add that if it's possible, we are very supportive of the Ag and Rural Affairs Committee's amendment that this well, which if it's constructed, it will have to be constructed to DNR in our 820, the administrative rule, will have to be a potable well. It will have to meet all requirements for bacteriologically safe water. And we just agree with them. It would be really nice if Mr. Pierce could take a drink from it. It's, as I believe your fire chief just mentioned at the start of the meeting, the weather is changing and it's dangerous to be out there in the sun without being hydrated. So we just approve, we support that and hope that you would allow that as well.
Okay, thank you. So next, I will call Mark Jones. He wishes to speak in support. I, so, Mark? Yeah, you need to.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mark Jones, 2266 South Sine Road, City of Pittsburgh. I submitted a petition to you guys this evening. And it went, Diana had it before, and so did Randy. I went out and met with a lot of the rural landowners and some folks from subdivisions to try to get a feel of what the community is like. And I agree with that the farmer should be able to take a drink from the hose that's irrigating the well. So I think that's pretty important. But anyways, there's another issue along with that. I do support Groundswell's position. But there's another part of this. If I, as a farmer, or several other farmers in the city of Pittsburgh, one where we ran water by their farm last year, if their well were to fail and had to be replaced, according to our current ordinance, they could not replace that well for a total use. The well that went bad was feeding the house and feeding the agricultural part of it. And if it went bad, they would be required to hook onto city water for the house and then re-drill a well for the cows. And that seems to be quite... And that seems to be quite penalizing to the few farmers we have left. And we, as a city, have always supported the farmers, or at least I think we are doing that. I hope we continue to do that. But in the case of where we ran the water last year, it would cost that farmer about $45,000 to run city water up to the house and then another $15,000 to drill a well for the cows. So I think they're being penalized. And I ask you to allow an existing farm to replace a well for both uses, the house and the cattle. I just don't think it's fair to the farmers, we do have to penalize them like that. And that's an awful cost to put on somebody. Now, we may not have a, this may never be used. We may not have a well that fails. But we have had some rural wells that have failed and they couldn't pull the pump, so they had to replace, drill a new well. So that could happen. It does happen. It's rare, but it does happen. But I think it's a shame that we would penalize that farmer. So that's... And Ag and Rural did not support the 10 acres. 10 acres, I feel is... You can grow a lot of vegetables on a lot less acreage than that. You can, on two, three acres, you can grow a lot of vegetables. I believe Ag Small, Deanna, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that Ag Small, the zoning part, is three acres. So that's all I have. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
So, okay, so next, I'm going to call each of the reps. And you're going to explain the amendment that you did in your committee and why. And then we're going to open the discussion to everyone, okay? So I'm going to ask David, if you can, from Public Works, what was the amendment?
Go ahead. Yeah, that was my suggestion. So when the agenda packet came through Public Works, it said that Chapters 30 and 40 had been amended to read as follows. But there was no highlighting to show what the differences were. And in Chapter 30, it said that the Director of Public Works may authorize a well. And in Chapter 40, it said that a connection waiver shall be granted. And that seemed like it might be contradictory. So there was discussion in our Public Works meeting as to whether we should do anything about it. And I suggested, let's go ahead and make the change. And that should trigger discussion amongst staff, which it actually has. And that was cleared up in the document that City Administrator Brecklin distributed this afternoon. So I think city staff's recommendation to ignore that amendment is correct.
Okay, so you are okay, you know, if we keep the original language?
Yes, so the well is different from the connection waiver.
Yes, okay, I agree. Okay, thank you. So next, we move to Plan Commission.
For the Plan Commission amendments, if you look at the referral sheet, we removed two clauses after handling of agricultural products. Originally said, as defined by SIC manual, as 016 and 019. We removed that. And we also removed the one after livestock. It says, as defined by SIC manual, as 0272 and 0291. We moved those two clauses so as to create more flexibility, because that's specific to certain types of vegetables and certain types of livestock. And we thought that we didn't want to micromanage which, you know, if someone's going to grow, if you're going to use their property for agriculture, we thought that it should be flexible in terms of what they're going to use to grow, if that's truly what they're using for, given also the other, you know, the constraints of the ordinance. So we wanted to eliminate those lines just to make it more generic.
So, and staff agree with those changes?
Yeah, I said it was acceptable, yeah.
Yes, okay. Okay, so now we...
I will move to make that amendment.
Well, we need to listen to...
Well, we can do one amendment at a time.
No, we are going to follow the process that I said. We are going to ask each rep...
Well, that's fine. There's no reason to have to come back to it, though, because it sounds like...
We are going to give the opportunity to every rep to speak up and then we are going to make which one we are going to move, okay? Can we do that? Randy?
Very good. And just to, we're in agreement as well that Ag and Rural agreed to remove the SIC manual. We also agreed that the word "may" should be stricken to "shall." We took it some steps further. We felt that the 10 acres should be reduced, if not down to zero, maybe to three acres. But as stated here, it's removed completely. Then the other suggestion was for the use of human consumption, just as Mark Jones has mentioned in his remarks. And he lays it out quite well that the Ag and Rural is being penalized for a replacement well along with tapping into city water, so.
Okay, thank you, Randy. So what I want to clarify here, that this ordinance, we added a paragraph for new wells. So we are not talking about replacement of wells. So that one could be another conversation for another time. But here, we're talking about new wells. And that there are also no, the water is not for human consumption. So, okay, so we're open now the discussion to the rest of the council member. So Jay, do you want to, you have something to say?
Sure, I will move approval. I will move to amend with the Plan Commission's amendment regarding the SIC manual.
Second. Any comments, question, discussion? The Plan Commission amendment has a 10 acres. So are you okay with that?
Well, I think we can talk about it separately. We can talk about it separately.
So, so we are, can you repeat there?
It's laid on the referral sheet, but it's striking two clauses that include as defined by the SIC manual. It's in the referral sheet, under the Plan Commission.
Okay, all of us in favor of approving the amended version, approving Plan Commission, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Okay. Amendment, amendment. So any other amendment?
Yeah, I will move to, I will move the Ag and Rural Affairs recommendation to remove the 10-acre limitation.
Second, the motion.
Any comments or question? No? Okay, all of us in favor of removing the 10 acres from recommended by Ag and Rural Affairs, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So now, what else?
So I just have a comment. I'm okay with this version of it. I think it's clear that the staff is okay with it. But I do think the point is well taken from Groundswell and from Mr. Jones about if somebody is using it for agricultural and using it to feed their livestock, but it's also potable water. It does, I don't necessarily want to take this farther than what it was intended to do, but at the same time, I do think that there's a logic. And if it's made potable, it seems hard to understand why. So I just am curious if staff could explore. I mean, I was looking at it and I was like, can you just remove the whole clause about human consumption? And just talk about if it's used for agriculture and livestock and it's located on an agricultural zone that it can be authorized by the Public Works Director and not mention human consumption at all?
But that one is okay.
But yeah, I don't know. But I think we should stick with what the... I think we need to stick with what the original intent of this was, which was to allow access to water from the Ag and, for this Groundswell Conservancy and anyone else in a similar situation where they're primarily using the water for agriculture. So my, I'm very comfortable with the version, but I do feel like I would welcome more discussion in Ag and Rural Affairs about potential updates or just discussion about why this exists. You know, I would love to learn more about why we have a policy like this and so that we can clarify about why we're moving forward with it in this form.
Randy, and then you, Jay. Randy?
I can accept what you're mentioning, Gabriella. However, I want some assurances that this is going to be brought around again from city staff. If we're going to only look at the, what you call the original intent, then we need some assurance, Ag and Rural, because they're very adamant that Ag and Rural is being penalized for the placement of a second well and to tap into city water if that well goes bad. And that's just not right. And we need to have a bigger discussion on that. And if you want to move that to the future, that's fine, just to move and follow the original intent. But I don't want this to fall to the wayside, that part of the discussion.
Oh, Jay?
Yes. That keeps getting turned off.
I think this is, this is a unique situation. And the only reason that this has come up this way is because Groundswell didn't get involved with this project five years ago before the water mains were extended to Terre Haute. So now they're there, and, you know, it's just a timing issue. There are, I understand the reasons behind Public Works talking about human consumption, because they don't want someone to dig a well and then hook it up to their house. Because clearly, the city water is a safer alternative than private well water. But, you know, beyond that point, you know, I think for now, I think it's okay to go ahead with this and have staff further look at it. But the bottom line is, we don't have, I mean, the police department is here. Can you imagine any situation under which you would cite somebody for drinking out of a hose connected to a private well? I mean, that's just, that's just not, it's not going to happen. So our police department has other stuff to do. And frankly, you know, they don't have time to be, you know, looking around at farmers to see if they're drinking out of a hose. So I would, I think what we probably need to do, as Mark mentioned, is, I think we probably need to work a little bit more on this ordinance and maybe create a separation between new wells and replacement wells that's clearly laid out in the ordinance. Because it's not clear. It's, you know, it's basically treating every replacement well as if it's a new well. And that's a problem. On the other hand, you know, there have been properties in the city, including the house that my ex-wife lives in, where there was a perfectly functioning well, and it was shared with a neighbor. And the city water came down Lacy Road and she was required to connect, but the neighbor was not. So they had to go and redo all the, it was, ended up being a very expensive project because they had to separate the well out. But the neighbor lived farther than 200 feet from Lacy Road. So, you know, it's, there's a lot of little funny things in the way this works. And I do think the Public Works Department needs to take a look at it and see if we can separate out these different kinds of uses. But I support wholly the amended ordinance we have on the floor right now. And I agree, Randy, that staff should look at it some more and come back with maybe some revisions that will meet the needs of the Ag community.
Okay, Shannon?
I just want to, just a quick clarification. So the amendment that we're doing is, has nothing to do with... So it's the well, which is only consumption by animals? And so it's not for human consumption?
Yeah.
Okay, just want to clarify, because we're going back and forth. Okay, thank you.
An amendment that we can debate.
Okay, so this is what I said, Mark. What we can do is discuss the replacement of all existing wells. It should be another conversation, you know what I mean? So we can direct the staff to work on that. But now we are discussing, this is a new wells. Yeah, Shannon?
So what would be the difference in price for someone to put in? Where, would there be a different price for somebody to add in for like human consumption versus just animal and vegetables? There's no difference in price?
It's more about the safety or the quality of the water. Because, you know, like...
I mean, wells, I mean, you can have your well tested and you can have your well treated. And the well, I mean, a lot of the wells, I know my parents still have a well and their well has been working for, I don't know how many years. I mean, and the water is fantastic. So, I mean, I don't know if there's really a concern if you're putting in a new well that they could really, you know, I mean, they could test it and make sure. Because then you're going to get, like, Mark said, the double dose. Why would you do two when you can just do one?
Right, but I think the, I think the situation we have is it's more complicated than what we can resolve tonight. Like, you know, most of the private wells in the city are between 60 and 150 feet. When the city drills a well, we go down 1,000 or more. And I know that many, most of the, most of the private wells in the city have sulfites in them, for example. Now, is it enough that it's going to kill you? Probably not. But it's not as, it's not as safe as something that's coming from water that's infiltrated down further and has had much of that stuff removed. But regardless, I mean, we don't, we don't have the expertise to fix that tonight. But I think we, I think if we move ahead with the ordinance as we've amended it, then staff can work on it and we can come up with some other options in the future.
Okay, Shannon?
I mean, is there, kind of like what Randy said, is there a way, like, we can make sure this comes up in discussion? You know, where we don't have an issue and then, you know, with, we don't have an issue arise and then all of a sudden we're working on...
So we can direct the staff, Shannon, to talk, to do more research about this and consider the treatment of existing well, you know what I mean? So we can direct the staff to do that. Okay.
Yeah, and I would like to see that with staff and Ag and Rural as well. To continue this conversation, so that we move in, just as has been stated about, maybe there's some clarification needed for replacement. We need to have a bigger discussion and move this forward, yeah.
Who is the current Chair of Ag and Rural?
Mark.
So, you know, Mark, you can put it on the agenda. You can put it on Ag and Rural's agenda and make staff come to your meeting.
I was going to say that I've been on part of some very pushy committees. And we just put it on our agenda every single time. And we ask more questions and we ask for more information from staff. So I just, I, and I know that there's been a lot of resistance in the past. But I think obviously it's clear that there's openness to having the conversation. So I would encourage you to, and I would love updates. But I know we have a Plan Commission member on Ag and Rural Affairs, which is great, so we can get plan updates that can, so I would welcome the conversation. I agree. I think we should, we should continue it. And I hope, I would love to hear what the Ag and Rural Affairs comes up with and...
Mark was just elected to that position, so we have a full year of...
Well, technically, you're not supposed to, but I can give you an exception, Mark.
In that case, the city is protected, because we only asked for the stuff that's zoned, Ag exclusive, Ag transitional, and Ag small. That's the only, if your well goes bad, with that zoning, that you have a chance to replace it. That's, and all the other issues with the other wells and single families are, don't fit that category. It's only the people that are exclusively agriculture. And they're the ones that are really getting the short end of that stick.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we are ready to move on. So can someone repeat what we are going to vote, okay? So can someone repeat what we are going to vote, okay?
I think the main motion is to, it's what Plan Commission did, removing the SIC manual references and eliminating the, is at least 10 acres part of Section 1, Part 2.
That's it!
Okay, so all of in favor of ordinance 2023-014, with the, following the amendment done by Plan Commission, but also removing the 10 acres, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Angela and Michael. Okay, so next, what do we have?
Transportation.
So the TTC met last week, and we talked about the TTC recommendations to the Transit Study and Resolution R 20522. And so we, we decided we should have an RFP prepped by the end of September for a study on the three recommendations, which are, one, providing shuttle service to the Pittsburgh Civic Campus; two, providing a public transit connection between Hatchery Hill and the Pittsburgh Civic Campus; and three, providing a parking area to support park-and-ride service from Pittsburgh to the UW in downtown Madison. The scope of the work will be discussed at next month's meeting.
So from where is the, are you discussing the funding sources for these two?
That will be part of the discussion at next month's meeting.
That one will be important discussion.
Yes.
Okay, Seda.
Oh.
Oh, you have more?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay. So Pittsburgh is, well, Ross Kahler collated and forwarded all comments received from the TTC commissioners onto the Wisconsin DOT regarding the, Pittsburgh's response to the Beltline PEL study. We also discussed Pittsburgh adopting Vision Zero and decided that that was indeed something that TTC was going to try and champion. The Greater Madison MPO has already adopted Vision Zero, as has the City of Madison. So we feel like this is, is worth moving on. We also discussed the Hartong Fields development, including the recent amendment that was passed. And in those discussions, a few things came to light. And we kind of decided, well, we don't have an official opinion on this because it was, it was never referred to us. We did note that there were some changes to the, to the neighborhood plan that impacted transportation, and, and there were some concerns raised within the TTC. And that's why the TTC would like to have a voice earlier on in the planning of neighborhoods and developments.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Seda.
Seda meets this Thursday, and we are meeting at 8 o'clock, General Beverage, we're going to tour. I'm looking over at Joe, so he doesn't show up here at 7. I think you got the message, but, yeah, but we are...
And then we're also doing, well, housing will probably cover it, but we're going to do a tour of the several housing areas in the Verona Road West area, so...
Monday, Monday evening? Was it Monday evening, or?
Yep.
Okay, Ag and Rural Affairs Committee, Randy.
I think we discussed what we already discussed at Ag and Rural. Would you like me to repeat? All right, thank you.
Bicycle Committee.
I don't know, I was, I missed our last council meeting. Did anybody give an update? Because I wasn't there.
We're waiting for you.
Great, thank you, you're so gracious. So we met on August 1st, and let me just pull up some of these minutes. We re-elected Mark Hamilton as the chair. Thank you, Bill, for bringing that to our attention. We didn't even think about it. We talked about several bike-related events, including one that passed with Free Bikes for Kids, Slow Roll Ride in Madison. Also, the, Ryan Hueselman was one of our members. Will actually be Saturday, August 26th, at the Luna's Block Party to be, to fix bikes. There is, on Saturday, September 16th, 100 Miles of Nowhere Bike Ride that Brian will also be doing, where he just rides around in a circle for 100 miles, and people can join him. Incredibly tedious, but that's for a good cause. And there was also a discussion on the park-and-ride grants. There was also discussion on updating the bike and pedestrian plans. And what we're doing as a committee is just going section by section. And committee members are giving feedback on different parts of the plan to see what needs to be updated. The, there is a discussion on potential amendments to the CIP, as well as updates on kind of closures and projects that will affect the bike network. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. EMS.
Jim?
Yes, Vicrona has received their portable ultrasound devices. And they'll be doing a demo this week with doctors. Currently is only being authorized to be used for cardiac arrest patients in order to detect the pulse. I didn't know that some people, it's hard to detect the pulse on them. So you want to provide the correct treatment. They're looking at expanding this to also do trauma assessments, IV insertions, and vascular needle insertions. So that level of care is really beneficial to the community to expand.
Thank you. Healthy Neighborhood Committee.
We are...
You're good, you're green.
It wasn't, though. We, we are meeting on September 5th, I believe, or 6th. I think it's the 6th. We're meeting on September 6th. It hasn't been posted yet, but it's coming.
Thank you. Housing Advisory Committee.
Yes, our next meeting will be September 11th. So no big update, other than as Seda reps Randy and Joe mentioned, our neighborhood walks were postponed from the 14th due to the rain to the 28th.
So what time is that? It's in the afternoon, is it?
Yeah, 5 o'clock?
I got it.
Okay, thank you. Landmark Preservation Commission, Shannon?
We have not met.
Okay, and Tree Advisory Committee?
So we met on the 10th. We were really excited about the ordinance passing. We also discussed some of the invasive species that are in our parks, but mainly Magaw Park. We're going to see if maybe we can try to spearhead maybe getting some of the buckthorn and things out of there. So that's still in discussion, but other than that, that would be it.
Thank you. So now we move to a report from other commissions and committee, and we have the Police Facility Oversight Committee. I don't know, Jim, I know the chief, some members of the police department are here, and Paul, too. I know that you guys have a presentation, so... Jim, do you want to do that intro? Okay, okay. Chief, and Paul, the rest. Okay, so, so we are not going to time them, because they are going to do a presentation, so...
Everybody has a role. I want to start with introductions first. Al Morales, Pittsburgh Police.
Ned Hartwick with the Police Department. Paul Witter with Public Works Department, Senior Engineer.
Matt Lee with the Police Department.
We also brought along Andrew Mayo from FGM Architects. Matt, are you going to get a start, or Paul?
I'll do the first couple if you give them.
Okay.
Is it on the screen yet? I don't know if we see it.
So who's going to, who's going to start?
All right, I'll go ahead and start first, sure. Sorry about that. So you get lined up here. All right, there I see on the screen now. So I'm going to start with kind of the historical process. The city has fallen for major building projects. And this, quite frankly, is the same I've done in other communities as well. Next slide. So typically, the project is first approved in the capital improvement plans, where all projects originate from. And then once it's included in the budget, we start taking it to the next step. An oversight committee is formed by the mayor. An architect is retained by the city. And then we hire a construction manager. And construction managers typically just on larger building projects, like we did for the fire stations, or the library, or we're talking about for this, this facility as well. Not the typical, not the smaller facilities. So there's really different roles, different people play in this. The Public Works Department manages the design, the bidding, and the construction process, working with either the user of the facility, whether it's the library, the fire chief, or the police chief, depending on what the facility is. Then we hire an architect to prepare the final program. And Space Needs, they take a look at the work that was done already at the project. They prepare schematic design, do the design development, construction drawings, and construction administration. And like I said, in these larger projects, we'll hire a construction manager, and they'll be providing input during the design on the constructability of the project. They'll prepare estimates during different design stages of the project, and oversee construction of the facility, make sure it's being built according to our specifications. And then lastly, we have an ad hoc committee that provides input on the design of the facility. So there are a number of steps in this process. Like I said, we sort of first start with hiring an architect and a construction manager. We do that through a qualification-based system on the most qualified firms. The architect works with city staff, repairs the space needs and programming based off of previous studies, as I mentioned earlier. And then once you get the program done, then we review it with the ad hoc committee. And then, once the program is approved, the architect will then prepare schematic drawings of a design based off of that program. So once you get to the schematic design, that's when we take it to the public. So we're not at that point yet in this project. The design is presented to the Plan Commission and to the council for approval. After the design development is done, excuse me, the development design is started after the schematic design is approved by a council. Updated plans are presented to the public with more detail. That then leads into construction documents prepared based on the design development, admitting the project upon completion of the construction documents. And then after a word of the bid, construction begins. And then the user moves in. So you see there are a large, long number of steps involved in this process. So I'm going to turn it over now to the project histories of the police.
Thanks, Paul. I'm just going to cover a few things here on project history. Some of you are very familiar with the history that we have here with a building and, and some of the things that have transpired since 1999 when we occupied. We occupied the building in 1999, moved into our current space 15, 2015, 16 years later. A space needs analysis was published, we'll talk about that in a second. And then the building project was first mentioned in 2016. However, it didn't really show up in the CIP budget process until 2017. In 2014, a space needs analysis began, and that was a study really looking at both the staffing and space needs for the future with horizons at the 5, 10, and 20-year marks. And it examined a couple of different components, including the possibility of a city hall addition versus a standalone facility. This study was published in February 2015. And for those of you that have not seen it, it's available on the website. Major conclusion of the study, looking at square footage needs in anticipation of growth of the city and hopefully of the police department. It forecasted square footage needs, and this was looking at a standalone facility for the police department. You can see, we currently occupy 17,783 square feet in the City Hall building. In 2020, which we have passed, that was forecasting 60,240 square feet, eventually getting to 78,874 square feet in 2035. In the study, it identified a couple of different categories of space needs. It focused very specifically on immediate space needs, and this was back in 2015. We can cover a couple of these, for those of you that have toured the police facility. I think we've pointed these out to you, including evidence storage, which is a critical component of the police department, maintaining evidence, some of which we have to keep for a very long time. The ventilation system is connected to the evidence facility. And for those of you that have sat up here, for those of you that have worked in City Hall, you may know when we make a major arrest, and we have narcotics in the evidence facility that circulates through City Hall. Armory, office space, conference rooms, and indoor parking facilities, especially during inclement weather. These, on paper, tell a bit of a story. But I can tell you that these space needs and many other space needs impact our operations on a daily basis. They impact our personnel, and they directly contribute to a lot of the challenges that we deal with. Just a couple of weeks ago, we had a large investigation going on, and we had to bring witnesses up to City Hall, up to this space and to other spaces just down the hall, just because we had so many people to interview as part of a very major investigation. So it's one thing to look at some of these things in a, in a study or in a presentation, but to work in these areas every day, to have, to manage piles of evidence, and to find space to meet is a challenge on a regular basis for us. So moving on from the space needs study, and transitioning into the CIP timeline, and I don't want to get into the finance world too much here. We won't recite these word for word, but I, I wanted to share this portion of the conversation related to the CIP timeline, just to show that this is, process has been going on for eight CIP cycles. And there have been a number of modifications, different allocations of, of money for this process. So these are the first four cycles that this goes through. And then we end up where we are today with this current cycle. A couple of key points on this are that we've had modifications of the type. It was transitioned from an addition to a standalone facility. There have been modifications to timing and modifications to the square footage and funding. I think this is a reminder for everyone involved that this current process that we're in right now is a result of approval and direction from, from you, or for those of you, or from people that sat in, in seats prior to you. So again, this, this process has been very involved since 2016.
So where we stand now in this process, I know many of you have asked, how, how have we gotten to this point right now? And you're very interested in knowing what conversations are being had, what steps are being taken for this process. The historical is very perspective, what Lieutenant Hartwick had gone over. But more recently, some things to identify as recent events. Obviously, most of you already know, in March of 2023, the ad hoc committee had been created. And they're very integral in the approval process of any designs moving forward. April of 2023, the city council approved FGM Architects as the firm for architectural and engineering services. Followed by June of 2023, FGM Architects met with a group of representatives from various work, work groups, not only within the police department, but also City Hall, to identify a path moving forward for their programming. And I, I will probably screw up programming and design, but note that the design is, is not, we are not in the design phase of the facility. We're simply in the programming phase. So they essentially took all of our thoughts, our, our ideas, best practices, industry standards, and created their first iteration of the programming for the police facility. July of 2023, city council approved... July of 2023, city council approved Pepper Construction as a construction management firm for the project management. And in July of 2023, the first meeting of the police facility ad hoc committee commenced. I think it's important to point out all of those members of the ad hoc committee, Alder Jim Wheeler, Rosa Agaloo, Andy Potts, David Rousseau, Chief Morales, Officer Juan Inojos, and Paul on that ad hoc committee. Also, a concern that's been noted in this group and in others is what steps along the process does the public have to engage in this project, to provide their input, to gain knowledge? Steps that we've already taken so far in this process, as well as steps that will be taken as this process moves along, are, this is a standing talking point for all our police district community monthly meetings. We also have information on our website, as well as we post on social media. Fact TV is a partner with us along this process. We'll have public presentation meetings as the schedule moves along in this entire multi-step process. Obviously, the ad hoc meetings with the ad hoc committee are for the public, and then, here in this venue for council meetings as well. So each step along this planning process and development stage in this entire project, the community will have an abundance of opportunities to provide feedback and gain information for this project. So moving forward from this stage, just to kind of give a timeline, we're not putting shovels in the ground tomorrow across the street. And it's important that everybody realize that, that we are in mile two of this marathon for this project. No designs have been finalized, nothing has been approved, other than the architects, and we need to allow this process to move along. Some prospective timeline milestones moving forward are August, this month of this year. We are moving forward in the schematic designs. In November of 2023, those schematic designs are for public meeting. And those schematic designs then move to approval by this governing body. After those approval, that approval of the schematic designs, the design development then begins and then moves to 2024 February, where the design development, there is a public meeting, and finally, approval from common council. Moving forward, you can see, as we go along this timeline, I don't need to identify every step along the way, but we don't move to construction bids until September of next year. So there's still a long road in this whole process for the design of the building. So the programming, as it is currently created by FGM Architects, along with some members here, is the design that, the programming that's currently created is rooted in modern standards and recommendations by not only industry standards, but also some highlighted law enforcement-related documents, such as the Twenty First Century Policing, as the chief has brought up in the past, as well as the United Way Special Community Police Task Force Recommendations Regarding Use of Force. In these documents, they really focus on a police department, not only the facility, but also the employees. They strive for certain highlights in their organization, namely accreditation, which the building, the facility, has a lot to do with the legitimacy of accreditation, enhance accessibility to not only the employees, but also the public, to enhance community engagement, to increase officer training, to improve upon officer wellness, and to have high standards of technology. So these programming considerations, as we've been working with FGM, the entire building is purpose-built. With each, each of the components are all interconnected with each other. It allows for future growth for the, for the police department, but also provides future growth for City Hall campus, based upon the population estimates moving forward, and as well as the total employees hired by the police department. It also allows the police department with flexibility. It also allows City Hall campus with flexibility to utilize spaces within the police department. So as we've been planning, we have identified a preferred schematic design or programming that is projected at approximately seventy-eight thousand square feet. It's a multi-level police facility, highlighting sustainability features as well as training components within the programming created. Each of the designs and programming, the program created, all components of a high-functioning police facility. Flexibility for anticipated growth and identifies what's not only needed now to train, to attract, retain, and train the best personnel possible, but also allows that flexibility for the future.
So in summary, want to wrap up with a few questions. This isn't a graded quiz. It's just a kind of a steering exercise here to talk about some of our priorities and ask ourselves collectively as a community, as a council, as a police department, looking forward into the future. Do we want to be prepared for the future growth of the city? Every time I leave the police department, it seems like something else is sprouting up, which is a good sign, but that means that it could be more calls for service. It could be more activity for us. Future growth of City Hall, as I understand it, we're running out of, or completely run out of office space, and our IT department is moving into the basement. And the police department. Do we want to ensure a safe environment that reduces risk for employees, visitors, and those in our custody? It was suggested that perhaps we show a highlight reel of some of our employees slipping and falling out in the parking lot when the cars are parked outside in the winter. We'll spare you that. Do we want to address environmental impacts of police vehicles and facilities? I know it's a conversation that comes up on a pretty regular basis in here with vehicles idling that are filled with expensive police equipment and need to be ready to go at a moment's notice. We are happy to report that with the addition of some parking stalls in the basement down below, why you hear the garage door opening a little bit more during council meetings is that our newer vehicles were able to plug in and keep those vehicles from idling. So that's a positive step forward, but we want to have that be a component of this facility. Do we want to create a space that fosters increased community engagement? So do we want a police department that's easily accessible, that people know where to go, when I have to give directions for someone to get to the police department? I want it to be someplace that people know where to go when they're coming to pick something up, when they're coming to meet with an officer. We want that place to be welcoming and inviting and not a long hallway in the lower level of a building. Do we want to ensure that our police personnel are highly competent in order to meet the high expectations of our community? Just about on a weekly basis, we meet with different organizations, community groups, that are hoping that we can be trained in a new topic. There's a variety of things that involve laws, policies, procedures that we need to stay up on. And in order for our staff to provide the best service possible, training is a need. I ask folks, when you get on an airplane, do you want the pilot to be highly competent and trained and up on the latest procedures? When you go into the operating room, do you expect that that doctor has been trained and is aware of the latest procedures? This is really no different for us. And there's an item later on your agenda here about talking about recruiting and retention. Do we want to attract the most talented workforce while retaining our valued employees and ensuring that they're well? One of the key components of the Twenty First Century Report Policing is officer wellness, and that's an area that's long overdue for discussion and talking about making sure that if we're going to be taking care of our community, that we need to be taken care of as officers when we deal with stressful situations on a regular basis or traumatic critical incidents. That cumulative effect of the work that we do on a daily basis, this space can help ensure that we have the space to decompress and feel safe and that we're valued and we have a space that we can take pride in. So just to summarize a few key points of the facility and what it's anticipated to do, what it will do. So that will allow for city growth. There's a couple of levels that the city can grow into. It will enhance our sustainability efforts, create a purpose-built space for current needs and future growth, provide welcoming community space, build a safer environment that moves closer to accreditation. And considering the crisis that we're in right now, I consider this last one to be really important, aid in the recruiting and retention of personnel by focusing on wellness and training.
So we've been asked to come here tonight to provide you and our community with an update on police service facility project. As you all can see through this presentation, the planning for this project has spanned several years, and we have still a long way to go before this facility is finished. We're only a couple of steps into this journey, and there are several stops along the way where your voice, the community's voice, will be heard to steer the direction of this project. I know that many of you have concerns regarding the project costs of the first iteration of this project. I completely understand. We completely understand. But we need to be, and we all understand the fiscal responsibility for the citizens of Fitchburg. But also know that the current programming created by FGM, with the assistance and input of the staff, has been rooted in modern industry standards and law enforcement recommendations. It has taken into consideration current needs of our staff and our city, as well as the future growth of our rapidly growing community and increasing expectations in our profession. Tonight, we have not provided you with different design packages and prices for those considerations. That's because we can't. This program decision needs to be included, it needs to include the ad hoc committee. That was the purpose for it. That's the purpose for some of the other buildings that were erected as well. We'll need that committee with the tools and information so that they can make the best decisions for the city's department. We have instead provided you with an overview of the preferred schematics and that will, and what it will provide our community. We will work with FGM and Pepper Construction to identify cost-saving measures, as well as other funding sources, including grants, as this process moves forward. We all want what is best for our community, for today and for the future. But we shouldn't make decisions that negatively impact us, as we have in years past. It is my hope that we can learn from those decisions to adequately prepare for the future and ultimately save our community both time and resources. We'll continue to collaborate with you, the ad hoc committee, and the involved stakeholders. And lastly, I have sent out an email on August 8th to all of you on a tour to visit two police stations. I received three responses, but I please want you to attend. It's extremely helpful, and it will be helpful in the decision-making process for you and us as this project moves forward. Thank you.
Okay, so we are open for question, comments. This is your opportunity. Who is going first? Abreel.
I just want to thank you for this. This is really helpful to kind of see the stepwise exactly what's happening. As we were going through the approvals and the lead-up to this, I didn't quite know exactly what the full picture looked like, so this is really helpful. It's great for me, but I think also it's great to have this on a public record too, for anyone that's curious about the process. You can just send them the video of this presentation, and there's clarity. So thank you for putting this together. I'll also say that going on the police facility tour sometime last year was really helpful. And then, I also went on a tour with Lieutenant Hartwick to one of the Madison facilities last year, and that was also really helpful. So if anyone hasn't done that already, I'd encourage you to go take a look, because it just really helps contextualize it, because it's a huge cost. And it's a big decision, a lot of big decisions. And yeah, it's, there's a lot that goes into this, and I appreciated all the context as we move forward in this process. So thank you so much for putting this all together. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Who's next? Jim.
Chief, could you just make sure the council members get a copy of the, send us a copy of the presentation?
The presentation? Absolutely.
And who thought of putting a police station in the basement of a building? I just still can't figure that one out. You know, we talk about what Madison does a lot on this. And Madison put two fire stations up on opposite sides of the city before they even really started to put houses up, because they anticipated what was going to happen. And this seems to put a police station, the way it's configured now down there, with not having the kind of like the things that would need to make sure that it's safe, that it's secure, and that we're going to protect evidence and not think about that back in 1999. I mean, I don't know. It just seems to be, if we don't do it right, we're just going to be paying more money. And I would just like to see it being done right, right now, so that in the future, we don't have to make changes. Thank you.
David.
Ned, on the one slide, it showed, I think we're at seventeen thousand feet right now, and in 2020, it showed we had to be at, you know, it was like four times that or three times that. Is that including where we have evidence stored in other buildings or something, that we're three times too small right now?
That's correct. That does not include the remote evidence facility stores you have. That's outside of that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, to address Jim's comments, because I was here.
Oh, it was your fault.
As Paul was. So I had a lot of problems with the construction of this building. I thought this was the wrong location in the city to put it. But the, 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 the location of the police department in the basement was, that was just integral to building the building, because at the time, Doug Morris said only wanted to build one building. And the, I'm actually surprised that we're here now twenty-five years later, and we still have fire station number one, because that's where the police department used to be, was over on Lacy Road. And that facility, we were told at the time, had all kinds of, you know, air quality problems and everything else. And, you know, that building was going to have to be demolished. There was a, there was a proposal that was floated through for building a retirement community on that site, demolishing the building, building a retirement community there. None of that ever happened, and we still have the building. So, you know, we, we, when we, when we decided to build this building, you have to keep in mind, at the time, the city was about seventeen thousand population, Paul? Eighteen thousand?
Probably more about in the low twenties, I'd say, at that time.
Yeah, but we only had, I think we only had twenty-two or twenty-four sworn officers on staff. And the, they're just, you know, it was, it was, everything was so much smaller. And at the time, we never imagined the kind of growth that the city was going to have. So that's, you know, that's why it was done that way.
I have a question. Can you explain what are going to be the, you mentioned that you're going to enhance this sustainability effort. What do you mean? What does it entail to that? What is sustainability effort that you want to incorporate in the building?
That's yet to be determined as we go through the schematic design phase. We're looking at different options, you know, from passive building design, where you try to make the building envelope tighter, different materials that reduce the amount of energy it consumes to geothermal or solar. So there's a variety of things that we're still looking at in terms of sustainability at this point.
Okay, I imagine because the two fire stations, you know, we, you know, they were built following geothermal and solar, so I expecting, I don't know, that we are going to do the same with the police facility?
It's not necessarily given. We may go with a passive building design, that's something we're still taking a look into. into. There are problems with solar. We've had, cities experience a number of costs with solar. It's not just you put on the roof and you get free energy and you walk away from it. With solar, you have to replace the panels every 20 years. Geothermal, same, same issue. You've got a lot of pumps that have to be replaced periodically. So, maybe a better solution might be to try to just reduce the energy that the building needs. So, I think everything should be on the table at this point till we work our way through the process and figure out the, what's the most effective way to handle the energy needs of this building.
Well, I, I will recommend that, you know, we should look at solar and geothermal.
Yeah, I'm not saying we're not going to look at it, but I'm saying we need to look at all the options.
Okay, but, okay. So, the other thing, can you explain about the training? You know, you mentioned about training and the training facility. What does it going to include that? What is, what is?
So, the, the way that the, the programming is designed right now is the, all of the training components include a large training room that can be used for, from, by the public as well as by the police department. It also includes a defense and arrest tactics room. Defensive arrest tactics is essentially any kind of physical interaction that a police officer would encounter. We're able to train officers on the best practice, creating time and distance, utilizing de-escalation tactics first prior to any kind of physical interaction that anybody would use. And then also the open concept multifaceted training bay. And most of you probably identify it as a range. And this is not, these ranges aren't your lethal weapon where Mel Gibson and Danny Glover are on the line and they're, they're stringing targets back and forth in a very static range. These ranges or these training bays are designed in a way to allow for vehicles to, to go in, to be used, to, for officers and department members to practice rescue task force maneuvers, to put officers into situations where they have to make critical decisions. If you don't put officers in those decisions in a training environment, in a safe training environment, then they will never be able to replicate the proper decisions when they're asked to do it for real. So, these, this training bay or this range gets a very negative connotation because, oh, we're just going to go in there to shoot. And that is not the purpose of, is it a purpose? Yes. Is it the only purpose? Absolutely not. We train our officers, albeit we only have four opportunities to train every year. We have a total of 32 hours in the entire year that officers train in use of force, namely their firearms. This provides us, these training components of this building, provide us the opportunity to expand exponentially on officers' ability to train, our ability as a police department to provide on-shift training, the flexibility, as well as increase the frequency that officers are being placed in critical decision, both from a de-escalation standpoint as well as a use-of-force standpoint to ensure that they are as competent and make the, the proper decision when faced with that same situation on a call or in real life. So, those are the elements that are included in the training components.
Just to add on top of that, that the training component or the training piece is not added space, with the exception of the multipurpose room. The other ones are interchangeable, no different than a community room can be used as a classroom setting. So, it can be converted into a number of different options, but it's the same space, the same cost, no different than an exercise room. You can use the exercise room to use defense and arrest tactics. So, it's the same room that would be built in a facility such as, facility T such as this. But one thing I want to emphasize in the training piece, that is in the piece where we talk about the, the recommendations in 21st century policing, the repeated training. I, I just want to put things in perspective when I was talking to a community a couple of weeks ago, a community group, when they asked, why this? Similar to what you asked mayor. In the audience, many of you don't know, but there's a Hall of Fame basketball player in the back here, Dave Shaw. And I, I'm going to bring him, mention him because for basketball, you shoot a free throw. It's uncontested. You should be able to make a free throw 100%. NBA basketball players can shoot free throws every day. And they're lucky if they can sustain an 80% free throw average. The, one of the highest risk tools that a police officer has on their belt, and you all have seen nationally what goes on when we use that tool, that's our firearm. But yet, we can, we only have the ability to train with that four times a year. Yet, we, we are supposed to be proficient with that. When you train with it more, the use of force goes down because of the muscle memory, the repetition and the encounters and the scenarios that you play out. Your use of forces do not increase. Nationally accredited tactical enforcement units have less use of force because they train so much that when they encounter those situations, their ability to de-escalate are much greater. That's why we push the standard that's in the 21st century, and we're now 23 years into the 21st century, to have the ability to train our officers to the expectations of the Fitchburg community.
Any other comments? Question? So, what I want to add is, you know, you mentioned that you cannot bring the option, you know, today to us because, you know, you cannot calculate that. But I think it's important for this council to understand, you know, we need to, we already approved $35 million in the CIP, you know what I mean? So, so that one is your, you know, what is available right now, you know? So, I think for us, if, you know, it's a, when you start doing the design and adding the components, this amount is, you know, is not going to be enough, you know what I mean? We need to, you know, we need to know how much is that, you know what I mean? We need to, I think, I, I think that we have to come up with options eventually. Because, you know, the budget is 35 millions, you know? And I know that construction costs and other things that we cannot control will be, you know, part of this process. But we need to be comfortable determining where is going to be the variance. It's going to be going five more million, 10 more million dollars, you know what I mean? So, where are we going to, you know, draw the line and say, yeah, this, we want a police station that is not exceed X amount of millions of dollars, you know what I mean? So, we need to know which, what is going to be the number.
So, that's, that's one of the reasons we have Pepper Construction hire, is we work through those different design steps. They'll be preparing estimates and so we'll be able to touch base with the council on that as we, as we go along. So, we're a little early, have to give a really good number at this point. And part of the process, when we bid the project, we're having something we call add alternates. So, depending on how the bid prices are, there'll be different elements we could add on to the building or components we could add to the facility. So, there's still more to come, yeah, on the cost. I, I think when we come back in November, the approval, we'll have one estimate, remember there's different estimates done throughout the process as we go along.
So, by November, you're going to have an idea how much it's going to be?
We'll have a number then.
And when do you need to have the final, you know, number? So, because I need, you need to get the okay to the engineers and, you know, the architect to start the process, you know? So, it's going to be November?
In November, we'll go back for the council approval at that point.
Okay. Any other question, comment? No? Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, so next, we move to the Standing Committee's report and we are going to start with finance. Any report in the finance committee?
No, nothing further than what we've already discussed this evening.
Uh, personnel committee.
We had a big meeting on August 9th where Baker Tilly presented the organizational study and we had a discussion. It is, I recommend that if you, I, I can't summarize it in just a quick report because it's just too detailed, but the report that Sarah sent out, if you haven't taken a look at it yet, I do think it's pretty skimmable, but it's also very readable. I would encourage everyone to take a look at it. It is very detailed and there are potentially a lot of things we can do to reorganize departments to make it more efficient. And not things that I would have expected, not, not things I would intuitively have known. And they did a really good job making a pitch for, for these potential changes based on other municipalities of similar sizes and best practice and really giving us comparative, you know, options so that it's not just a random thing, it's something that's been done in other organizations and has worked well. So, I would encourage you to take a look at the report at least and maybe take a look at the, at the video too if you want. One of the things that did come up though is that for police and fire and EMS, those are such specialized departments that have such unique challenges that they couldn't, they could make some recommendations, but they were somewhat vague. So, I think we're going to have to have more conversations specifically about the staffing plans for fire and for police. EMS is obviously a totally different thing with the Fitcherona overarching, so that will also have to be a separate conversation. But we're looking at for the September Personnel Committee meeting, having, having a discussion on that specifically. One for police and one for fire to talk about staffing since they both have their different and unique staffing challenges. But yeah, it was a really good report. I think it'll be really interesting to see how we can incorporate it into the budget. Highly, highly recommend. And then our other one that we discussed was the police retention bonus, which we'll look at in a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Public safety and human services.
Large amount of activities going on. It's really, I'd say exciting time in the city, all the, all the things going on. I would just indicate to you, one trend I've seen is we have a lot of people getting married and using our city parks and facilities for their receptions and even their weddings, which we haven't seen in previous years. There was a very nice wedding at Eagle James Town last, last weekend. It was very, and so we're, we're seeing an increase in that. So, our, our parks and facilities are in demand and being used by, by our citizens. We have a lot going on. It's exciting.
Thank you, David. So, next we move to new business. So, David.
R160, or I'll move postponement of resolution R16023 until the September 12th council meeting.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of postponing resolution R-160-23, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. So, next one.
I'll move approval, resolution R16123, preliminary assessment resolutions for 2023 sidewalk replacement.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Oh, the finance committee approved?
Finance committee approved.
Okay, what is it?
So, this sets forth, city has evaluated sidewalks that are in need of repair, tripping hazards, various things, and this sets for the city to provide the assessments, evaluate that, provide the assessment resolution so we can see what's going to cost the city and the, and the residents for these repairs.
Okay, any questions, comment? No? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-161-23, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. Next one.
I'll move approval, resolution R16223, adopting state municipal agreement to fund the construction of the county MM pedestrian underpass.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Did finance committee approve?
Finance committee approved.
Okay, what is this?
This is a safety enhancement. We feel it's too dangerous for crossing MM, so putting an underpass. We are getting federal funding, I believe, for 60% of the project the city would be responsible for, the remaining 40% or whatever additional costs came. So, there is, that is what we are, we are requesting to get that, that matching funding.
The design is going to be in 2025 and the construction in 2026 for this?
That is confirmed. Thank you, William.
Okay, any comment? Jay?
This is another thing where in the council packet, we didn't have a map showing us where this actual underpass is going to go. So, I think it's a fine project. I just think we need to have that information when it comes before the council.
Very good, very good point, Jay. I would add, add one thing here. Bill and I, we discussed this a little at Public Works the other night. I feel this, this really benefits Terra Vasa and the neighborhood on the other side. I, I would like to see an assessment for those neighborhoods, you know, for, for 30% the city pays 10 and, and our grant would be 60. But I'm just throwing that out. It doesn't have to be determined at this point.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of resolution R-162-23, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So, next we move to the resolution, oh, okay. So, this one is going to finance.
Okay, motion to approve resolution R-166-23, police department employee retention payment program.
Second that motion.
Did finance committee approve?
Yes, finance committee approved.
And Personnel did recommend, but it wasn't a resolution at that point.
Thank you. So, we have Sarah Olson, a member of the police department. So, Sarah, you want to start with the, what is this about?
Absolutely. I'm going to share my screen up here, just one moment. Okay, so this is regarding the police recruitment, police retention program. Right now, we're really struggling with recruitment and turnover for police officers. So, I thought it'd be helpful to kind of see some statistics. Three to five years ago, we would receive 100 to 150 applications in just one month for a police officer. We've had a continuous recruitment for over a year now and we only have 185 applications through that. So, really what we used to receive in one month for applications takes over a year now to get for a police officer. So, things have changed. When you look at turnover rate over the years, you can see going back to 2015, you can just see the steady turnover, but last year was really tough for us. We lost 14 officers, which equated to 25%. If we lose a couple more yet this year, we'll be at 14% for turnover rate. You might be asking, why are people leaving? And just to put it in perspective too, we lost 55 officers since 2015 and just 26 officers since 2012, not just, but 26 officers since 2020. Retirements, of course, but out of, actually people getting out of the policing profession is a, a big reason. We have individuals that don't pass probation. We've had other employees leave for other employers, FBI, military, state. And then, of course, our neighbors, you know, we have the city of Madison PD, we have the Dane County Sheriff's Office. We lost six individuals to Dane County just in the last, you know, year and a half. And then, of course, there's relocation. So, these are some of the big reasons why we're losing our law enforcement. So, our goal, well, our current situation, we have seven current vacancies right now for police officers and we have five that are eligible for retirement. We're trying to figure out what can we do to retain and show appreciation for the staff that are committed. So, the police department and chief, chiefs will get into this more, but put together a police retention program. And there's a few components here listed. So, there's actually four components to this program. It's all in the packet. The first step is recognition pay for sworn staff. It comes to about 150,000 including benefits. There's recognition pay for professional staff, that's like your civilian staff, that's about 25,000 including benefits. And then, something called the service bonus for sworn staff, that's 85,000 including benefits. All of this will be paid for by salary savings from the police vacancies. This is a one-time program. Then the fourth part of it is an onboarding stipend to help us with recruitment. So, I'm looking at about $14,000 including benefits for this onboarding stipend. And this would be paid for through the Safer Communities Grant, so not through the salary savings. We did bring this to Personnel on August 9th and it was recommended for approval. And it has been vetted through legal, our whole policy. So, I'll turn over to the chiefs to, to explain more.
So, first off, I, I do want to thank Lieutenant McCarthy and Lieutenant Hartwick for doing the lion's share of, of the work on this, on this program, as well as many of the calculations, as well as our finance director, Misty Dodge, on, on her and just to ensure that our math was correct. I guess the most important thing regarding the, the retention bonus program is we maintain our current staffing and that's essentially what this program is, is purely designed for, so that we, we can stop some of the- so that we can stop some of the dam from breaking, to allow us to catch up to our mass amount of vacancies that we've faced since the beginning of the year, being 11 officers down. Now, we do, we have hired six officers in that timeframe, however, in that same timeframe, we've lost two officers. There's nothing, that level of experience of officers that we've lost, we can't replace it the day that we hire somebody. And I know the Chief has reiterated several times over that it usually takes approximately one and a half to two years for a new, brand-new officer with no prior experience to be a contributing member to the Police Department, to have the confidence that he or she is going to be able to handle some level of the calls for service and expectations from our community. So this is, this program is designed to, hopes, retain the officers that we do have, the professional staff that we do have, show appreciation for those individuals that have decided to stay with the City of Fitchburg, as well as provide an additional bonus for those that have stayed for a number of years. So that's what this is designed for, as well as the onboarding stipend for, to allow a little bit more ease of transition for newer officers and even lateral transfer officers that need to relocate, need to get brand-new uniforms, above and beyond what the city already provides for a uniform allowance. So be happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, any questions? Comments? Jay?
Yeah, I got a bunch of things. Regarding the officers that have left and gone to other agencies like Madison and Dane County, what are the reasons that they're leaving to go there?
So in years past, we haven't had a very high number of officers that would ever leave to go to Dane County. Majority of the time, Fitchburg had always been viewed as somewhat of a leap pad police department, based upon purely the level of expectations that we place on officers. We expect a high level of competency handling a variety of calls from a 911 disconnect to, you know, two-person homicide. Those skills that officers typically receive in their first three to five years are only comparable to that of the City of Madison. So most of those officers, because we work so closely with the City of Madison, typically develop those relationships and they move on to the City of Madison, most notably for opportunities. We're a small department, we have very little resources as far as creating those special events or specialized assignments. And once an officer or person, one of our employees gets into those specialized units, they typically stay there for a considerable amount of time. So there's not a lot of turnover in that particular position. Now, with Dane County, most of the officers that have left to Dane County, it seems to be more driven towards the financial side. We have seen officers that are near retirement know that they will be paid upwards of $110,000 per year with no overtime, working in the jail. And for us, that doesn't seem like something that we can necessarily compete with. So now it's a little bit more multifaceted reasons why people are leaving, especially to our surrounding communities. Madison was for the opportunities as well as the pay, because they do provide a lot of educational incentive pay that we can't necessarily compete with at this point. And now with Dane County, it's just as much pay as anything.
What does a typical Fitchburg police officer make in comparison to Dane County?
I'd have to verify with Misty, but I'm thinking that most officers are right around at the 10-year mark, which is the highest mark, right around $80,000 per year.
How does that compare to some of our other local departments like Sun Prairie or Middleton may not be a comparable, but...
Middleton, surprisingly, from a financial standpoint, is very comparable too. They're not comparable to the level of calls for service that they're going to be responding to, but they always seem to be at the same level of pay as the City of Fitchburg, as well as Verona and Sun Prairie. We're all hovering right around the same area. And it will depend, the pay fluctuates based upon where the schedule for contracts usually are at that particular moment.
What would, what do you think it would take? Because, so as, for example, we're looking at doing a referendum next year to ask the voters to help us fund some things. So what do you think it would take to keep officers here as far as an increase in the pay scale? And, you know, without getting into the union negotiations and any of that, because we can, that can be handled at another time.
Yes, it's a multifaceted approach and I think you're hearing us coming up with the asks. Part of it is facility, part of it is the opportunity right now in a growing police department like Fitchburg, it's there. So that will be a piece. At the end of the day, the law enforcement profession is in crisis mode. We're not the only ones experiencing this. The problem is that you have a low base of applicants. So we have to promote the image, we have to promote and our image here at Fitchburg if we want to compete with the other cities. And we have to do, we don't, it's not a one-all-end-all. If I had the answer, I'd be telling you, here's the answer. As I stated in the earlier meeting, there's one city in the state that's offering now up to $10,000 as a signing bonus. They had the application process for two months and came up with two applicants. So Dane County has not filled their void. So there is one officer that left one city here in Dane County to go to Dane County Sheriff's at $120,000. It's still not filling the void, so money is not the answer, it's a number of different things that is impacting this profession.
Well, you know, I looked over what was submitted to us about this particular program that you're asking for tonight, and I don't really have a problem with it except that it's like, it's not an ongoing thing. This is something that we would do this one time, and then after that, who knows what happens? So that's the concern that I have, is what do we need to do to make this work in the long term?
Well, as the Chief mentioned, this, and as I mentioned earlier, this program is purely, the intent is purely to hold on to the people that we have, so we don't lose that knowledge base that we currently have. Because nothing would be more impactful on our department, as young as it is, to lose some level of experience at the five to 10-year mark, because those officers eventually are going to have even more experience and are going to be able to transfer that knowledge and experience to the younger officers. So this is very similar to the referral bonus that we introduced earlier in the year. This retention bonus, along with the facility, along with contract negotiations moving forward, as well as adding staff in certain spots to provide more adequate opportunities across the board. This is not going to be a two-month, three-month process, this is going to be a multi-year process to get us to the point where we have to be as a community, as a police department.
And I get that, I totally understand that, but what I'm looking at here is something that's for 2023. So what do we do in 2024 and 2025?
I think we do need to leave the door open, and we talked about it in Personnel Committee, that we do need to leave the door open. I believe it was Alder Jetser that brought this up, that if we're facing a similar situation next year, or we need to consider different funding sources to retain police officers, not only police officers but all city staff, because we do lose other city staff in very important spots within our organization. So we do need to keep this conversation going moving forward, but this is just the first step.
Well, I guess what I'm driving at is we're going to be doing a referendum next year to ask the voters to increase their property taxes. And we aren't going to do that every year. We're going to do this next year, we probably won't do it again for a long time. So I want to make sure that the things that we need, we get into that referendum. And it may involve asking for additional money and wages for a lot of different departments. But the question is, can, because we're going to have to nail down what we're going to be asking for in the next several months. So the question is, what do we need for the Police Department to make this more sustainable? And to make sure that we're not, you know, I remember when every police officer we hired was here for 20 years, so, but that's not, that's not the way things flow anymore. And I get the idea of opportunities, because, you know, we only have, we only have so many positions and there's only so many levels of hierarchy that officers can advance through. And I get, I totally get that, and we're not going to have a specialized bomb unit and, you know, we have the, we do have the K-9 unit, but we only have one. And so, you know, I guess the question is, what can we do to make more sustainable options for this moving forward?
There's a number of different options and approaches that we really have to sit down and think that through and present. We have a five-year strategic plan that we established last year, put a lot of thought, a lot of work into it, brought in data, and we have that ready to present. But that alone, like you stated, we still have to fill the positions and have people want to work here. The opportunities will grow because the city's growing. And the larger that this city grows, it's going to have to sustain itself and quit asking for mutual aid. Because there's going to be a time when other cities are going to say, hey, we don't have the time to go over to Fitchburg and help you out every time. So we have to be able to stand alone. And that comes with our staffing plan. We do have that here, but that's one piece.
Any other question? Who wants to speak? David?
Just a comment. You know, I got to chat with the sheriff, you know, and I said, it must be nice to not have to answer to taxpayers, and he kind of laughed and smiled at me, you know, that they can increase things 9% and the county supervisors don't get hollered at when the tax bills do, it's me. So, you know, their lack of accountability to the taxpayers hurts us. He should be training his own people for the jail, not taking our experienced people, you know. It irritates to me, but, you know, I can't do anything about it. But the fact that there's, no one's questioning the county supervisors and the sheriff when, you know, they're increasing spending at a, you know, unsustainable rate, I think. That, I'll get off my soapbox.
Any other comments? So my comment is like, yes, I really approve this, I think this is, you know, this is great. I know this is a solution, it's a temporary solution, it's like a patch, but I need that, we need to keep the people here, retain, and I fully support this all. Any other comments? So we're ready to vote? Okay, so all those in favor of resolution R-166-23, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. Thank you very much, thank you Sarah for staying so late. Thank you guys.
Thank you all for listening today, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So next we move to the Mayor Report. So one thing that I want to mention is that, a couple of things that happened in Fitchburg and I participate, one I want to say now that the Police Department is here is the community night out. It was a great success, you know, it was, I never have seen so many people, there was a petticoat, you know, so many children. I think like every year, this event grows, and so I think it was a very, it was a community event. So I want to say thank you guys, thank you your team, because you spent a lot of hour and effort and I think it was a great event. I received one phone call today, that someone complained that we don't have, we should think about transportation to bring other people from other parts of the city to the park, especially those people that they don't have cars. So, you know, for next year, to think about how we can do it. So, and then the other thing I want to congratulate the Police Department, I was, last week was the Latino Youth Academy, where there were like more than 30 kids aged from grade six and seven, from different school districts. And they spent the whole week learning different skill, learning about, you know, the Police Department, the Fire Department, EMS, they did a tour in the Capitol. So it was a great event. On Friday was graduation with all the parents, and so they were, we did, they did it here in the Senior Center. So there were so many kids, parents, and also they were with the Amigos en Azul, with the Monona Police Department, the Verona Police Department, Sun Prairie, and the Office of the Sheriff, isn't it? I am, okay. Madison, Madison is, yeah, is all the, is another of the organizers. So it was a great event. I was able to, you know, to, they invite me to, so it was great to talk to all these Spanish Latino families, so it was great. So then, I, the other thing is I participate also, we, I have a couple of meeting with the Town of Verona Board Chair, Chad Brecklin and myself, we went to visit them to discuss a couple of, you know, Fitcherona and other projects that we have with the town. And then we also, I also met with the Villas of Oregon, the president of the Villas of Oregon, to discuss some future, you know, project that the city, we are going to incorporate next year when we update the comprehensive plan. So one of the other initiatives that the cities want to put in, you know, after we are finalized with the two neighborhood plan, is next year we are going to do a full revision of the comprehensive plan. So that one is coming for next year. We already have some funds allocated in the ARPA, OT, whatever it is first, I don't know.
In the investment.
In the investment plan. So that one is coming. So the other thing that I have been very involved in participating with the budget, we already started with the budget process. So I have like the very first draft of the budget. Yes, and it's, you know, we're going to have to make a lot of compromise for next year. But, so in the next two months, two months? One month?
One month.
One month, one month. So we are going to be working with the, in the budget. So also, some of you are already meeting with me to discuss the district challenges of, you know, the district needs and also what do you want to see in the budget too. So thank you for all of you out there that already, you know, are planning to meet with me, I appreciate that. Also, I want to, I forgot to also to say thank you to, for the community night out to the, you know, Lisa, Sarah, Jill from the Senior Center, they were also there, then Fact TV, so was part of that. And yesterday, it was the last concert of the Mackey Farm Park, and also was, it was very well attended, so I want to say thank you to all the staff that participated yesterday. We, you know, we distributed some of the 40 years anniversary cookies, we have like more than 1,000 cookies, you know, there's, I think there are some leftover in the kitchen. So it was a great, another great community event. So that one, this is the thing that I'm making our, you know, city, and we need to celebrate all of these, you know, events, because this is how we create a vibrant community. So I want to thank everyone that participates. So what else? And last week, I had the opportunity, no, two weeks ago, I had the opportunity to assist, to attend to a Mayor's Conference in Pennsylvania in Scranton, more than 70 mayors from different parts of the country and different sizes of municipality. We had attended that, and it was organized for the Mayor's Innovation Project, it's a center that is run by the University of Wisconsin. And then, and two municipalities from Wisconsin were there, it was Madison and Fitchburg, so it was great, you know, we have that, you know, representation. I was able to learn a lot of things, I am coming with a lot of ideas, so it was, it was great to talk to other mayor from other municipality and, you know, and also compare, and I think we are doing a great thing. and, and also compare, and I think we are doing a great thing here in this community, you know, so. So that's it. This is my report. So if you have any question, let me know. Okay, so next we are gonna start with District Two.
Well, I'm afraid you stole most of my thunder. I was gonna talk about the National Night Out, the last concert at McKee. There's also still a bit of construction is ongoing on Jacqueline Drive there with the water main replacement. And then just echoing Chief Pulvermacher's warning about the excessive heat. Depending on which, you know, where you get your weather report from, I saw one today that said tomorrow the high will be ninety-six, but it will be so humid that the heat index might be over a hundred and twenty. So be careful. And, hey, you know, if you, if there's any trouble and you live in a, in a house with a basement, invite your neighbors downstairs if they need it. It'll be nice and cool there.
Okay, Gabriel?
One thing, the Sustainability Plan survey is still available on the cities. It's on, it's actually not on the city website. It's on the paleblue.org website. But if you search Fitchburg Sustainability Plan in Google, which is the best way to find things on the city website, unfortunately, you'll get both the, the city sustainability page and also the paleblue.org website, so really easy to find. Go ahead and do that Sustainability Plan, and if you are really into it, you can apply to be on the Steering Committee for the plan. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. District One?
I don't have much, I miss on that Public Works. The street resurfacing, pulverizing has started, and it's going through the end of, end of October. And the other thing, kind of district one, but Fitcherona Road Design, we're at about fifty percent with that. So that's all I, I had, and also had on Saturday. Saturday is Lunafest, a neighborhood festival, so.
Thank you. Joe?
I don't have any updates for District One, surprising.
So, right?
Yeah.
Okay, Jay?
Just a couple of things. The Sine Road, Lacy Road intersection is supposed to be open again next Friday, so we shall see. But residents are greatly expecting that while they are also dreading the closing of the Sine Road, Cheryl Parkway intersection. So, you know, six of one, half dozen of the other, I guess. And I also wanted to mention the Senior Center ribbon, ribbon cutting for the new patio. Will be on September eleventh at eleven-thirty in the morning. It's, it's a good project. They, it's been worked on for a long time, and I'm glad to see that it's finally happening. That's it.
Thank you. Shannon?
No report.
The Roundabout has been on, and Legacy is coming along very well. I'm very confident that it will be open by the end of the month, to the pleasure of the neighbors.
Randy?
No updates, other than for those that, that are not aware of it, but we lost one of our own Ada Dear.
Oh, yeah.
This, like about a week ago. And I've had the pleasure of knowing her for forty years. I met her out in DC. But incredible woman, and, I mean, she, she was the first woman to head the Bureau of Indian Affairs, the first woman to serve as the chairperson of a nominee nation, and the first Native American woman to run for Congress, and the list goes on. But she was, did live in District Four, and Joe and I are working on a proclamation for the next meeting. And if anyone has anything to, to, they'd like to include it in that proclamation, please reach out. Thank you.
I forgot one thing.
Okay, yes.
The movie night that was scheduled for Southdale Park on Thursday has been rescheduled for next Wednesday because of the expected heat.
Okay, so any other announcement? No? Okay, thank you, guys, for your reports. So next committee of the, next committee of the whole meeting is tomorrow. You know, the agenda is ready for you. We are gonna discuss a couple of topics. The next council meeting is September twelfth, so I need a motion to adjourn.
One for adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion adjourns. So we are adjourning at, I don't know what time, ten o'clock. Thank you.